The midst of March Madness and the college basketball down to sixteen teams. So the prayer today is about the basketball player's prayer. God, thank you for this game I love and for the strength to play it. I need my coaches, teammates, and opponents all through. I may not say it. Please keep me safe from injury as on the court I go. Give me grace in defeat and victory in your matchless love to show. Bless all who help invest in me, whose wisdom helped me grow. I know it's just a game, dear Lord, but I know I love it so. In Jesus' name, amen.
On March eighteenth, I approved a formal contract purchase order from the commissioners to Title Professionals Group for the purchase of parcels number ten dash one four three nine zero zero and ten dash zero eight five three five zero in accordance with Board Resolution twenty-five zero four nine. On March twenty-first, I approved five thousand dollars from the Commissioner's Office to Title Professionals Group LTD for earnest money related to the purchase of PPN ten dash one four three nine zero zero and ten dash zero eight five three five zero. On March twenty-first, I accepted the resignation of Kevin Cunningham, Maintenance Coordinator, to be effective March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, and granted permission to advertise to fill the position of full-time Maintenance Coordinator, number one zero one three. This position will remain posted until filled. I also approved an unpaid personal leave of absence for Christopher Makar, Recreation and Education Assistant, for twenty-four hours, three days, during the period of March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five through March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. This will extend his probationary period by twenty-four hours, three days. On March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, for the Maintenance Department, I accepted the resignation of Matthew Sarecki, Contract Coordinator, number one nine two four, to be effective April eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, and granted permission to advertise for the position of Contract Coordinator, number one nine two four. This position will remain posted until filled.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning, Adrian Gordon, Commissioner's Office. Today's financials included the unencumbered from the Commissioner's Office to Hinton Law Incorporated for appointed counsel fees from twenty-twenty-three that were not previously encumbered. The purchase order from the Commissioners to the County Agricultural Society Fund for the construction of a new poultry and sail burn, and travel requests from the Common Police Court Technology Fund to attend the twenty-twenty-five Annual Ohio Court Technology Conference, and from emergency services to attend the Davis Bessie Nuclear Power Station FEMA drill. There's a purchase order from Water Resources to Junction Auto Sales Incorporated for the purchase of a replacement operator truck. The truck this is replacing is a two thousand fifteen GMC Sierra twenty-five hundred with one hundred and fifty-four thousand miles, which will go to auction. And among the vouchers are forty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars from ADP to Zero Eyes Incorporated for the firearm detection system renewal, and also twenty-four thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-two cents from the Commissioners to Motorola Solutions Incorporated for eight portable radios, four for the dog warden, and four for emergency services.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adrian.
Good morning.
Good morning. Tracy Sokolitz, the Engineer's Office.
How are you?
Thank you. The County Engineers Office is requesting the Board rescind the motion from December twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four that read, approve the release of the maintenance fifty thousand dollars and paving forty-five thousand dollars. Guarantees being held for the Hunting Valley Preserve subdivision in Chester Township as the owner of record, NCR Ventures, owner Rick Duty, has performed all pavement and maintenance gear teamwork as required. Hunting Ridge was accepted for snow and ice control Chester Township on December nineteenth, twenty-seventeen.
So we're rescinding this then, just to release the, to release it now, or we're rescinding? That's what we're doing?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's my understanding that it was released into a new owner's name.
Okay.
And the bond was originally issued in the ownership name under number five.
Okay. All right, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Mr. Spudler.
Yes.
The County Engineers Office is requesting the Board approve the release of Hunting Valley Preserve subdivision paving bond and maintenance bond to the owner of record, County Line Estates LLC.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Mr. Spudler.
Yes.
The County Engineers Office is requesting the Board award the bid to Grade Line Incorporated for the replacement of call bricks on various roads in Monson Township in the amount of one hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifteen cents, as they represented the lowest and best bid. The bid bond submitted shall be held to serve as the performance bond for this project.
So move.
Second.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
How are you?
Good. Good morning.
How are you?
How are you?
Good.
Why?
Good morning. State your name and what the question is.
Craig Swetson from Jogger County Job and Family Services, Executive Director.
Gina Schultz, Social Services Director, Job and Family Services.
Thank you. We're here for item number seven, asking the County Commissioner's Office once again to recognize April, twenty-twenty-five as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month. We have submitted a resolution to you guys, for you guys to sign, and hopefully read into the record. And then we have, if you'd like to hear some statistics and updates from us, and then answer any questions that you may have.
So is this with the spinners again?
Whatever you want to call them. Yeah, Junction is again supporting us and allowing for us to put up our sign and pinwheels up at the corner right there at forty-four and three twenty-two.
Seems like this month comes around way too fast.
It does.
Doesn't it?
It does.
Yeah.
I think after the first of the year, it started, and then we're like, oh, my gosh, wait a minute, it's already here. And so, yes, the weather definitely doesn't make it seem like April, but.
Do you have some numbers of like cases comparison?
Yeah, so we will have three hundred and twenty-nine pinwheels up there, and that's for investigations that we completed in twenty-twenty-four. We, I think, have really been trying to work to like educate our staff, make some changes in staff, and talk with the community too, just about making sure that the reporting. I know we're downstairs today presenting to the training that they're doing, that CIT training about being mandated reporters and getting the word out. We've also worked with some of the schools to do some presentations too, just about reporting. We are still working through like some staffing things and making sure that we are bullet, I don't even say voice out, that we're in a place where we can work with the community, meet the needs that we have. Custody numbers, I think we've done a really good job with our custody numbers compared to other counties in the state to try and keep them low, trying to keep custody with parents whenever we can, and working with our other resources to make sure that their kids are still getting what they need. And if they need placement, working with like our Family First Council and Ohio Rise to try and keep custody with the parents that they don't have to lose that. So I think we've done a lot of really good things over the last year. We had a great review from our state in terms of mandates and different things that we are required to do, to the point that they asked us if we would participate in the federal review, which we've never done before in our county. And so we are one of the counties in the state of Ohio that's participating in the federal review. And they've done two parts of that so far, and it's gone really well. And our placement piece of that is going to be starting in May. So it's been a lot of really good things.
It's kind of like the equivalent of like an audit, but for the work that Social Services does. So instead of a financial audit, they're auditing our records and our responses and things like that. So and just so you guys are aware, I mean, the state of Ohio is now placement crisis. There are, and so Jogger in many ways is a little bit of an anomaly in that regard. But that's a good thing, because we only want to intervene and take custody of children from parents when we absolutely have to. If we can work with the parents and keep the child in the home and address whatever concerns they are, that's a good thing. We don't want our custody numbers higher. That means that there's government intervention, and then we have to take certain rights away from parents. And so for us to be in this situation where we are able to still work with families and keep children in the home, which is the least restrictive, which is the least traumatic for the child, that means that's a good thing in this county. And so especially with regard to everything else that is going on in the state and what we're seeing. I mean, you have in, you know, certain counties, you have kids that are sleeping in their Job and Family Services buildings because they can't find a placement for them. And then also with respect to residential treatment, if kids are in need of residential treatment, especially post-COVID and inflation, the costs of these facilities are incredibly high. That is correct. And that's why it's also great to have a youth center, which I guess you guys are know that we're looking at building even a new one in our county, because the cost of that youth center comparative to other places throughout the state or even out of the state is so much cheaper. And so we're very blessed in Jogger County to have the resources, the team, the workers, the staff that we have, because we are kind of bucking the trend in Ohio. And I really think in many, that's why the federal review, they asked us to take part of that, because it makes Ohio look good. So we're really, of course, I'm biased because I'm leading this group, but it really, they are doing a phenomenal job, Gina and her team.
So you could be the trend center for Ohio, possibly a fed.
Yes, sir.
That's great.
We do have our kickoff reception, April seventh, so I think you had responded to that. So April seventh, eleven to noon, just down the hall. We'll have light refreshments, and then we have at least one person coming in to talk about their experience working with us. We have.
And also April ninth, right?
Oh, and April ninth is where blue. Support and recognize.
So I will make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Right? Yes.
Do you guys want to do a picture? For the resolution?
Sure.
Yeah.
Gina, it's on the front page.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks.
Good job.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
Nikoras Water Resources, sorry for my voice coming out of a cold. Item eight on the agenda, Water Resources requesting the Board approve and execute the contract agreement with Ship Construction Company for the McFarland wastewater treatment plant upgrade project. The amount of thirty million, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. The bid bond shall be held to serve as a performance bond. This is the final step where after today, notice to proceed, and we're going to hit the ground running like next week. So it's a, it's a big, it's been quite a few years to get this thing under, under, you know, construction. So looking forward to this.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Yes.
Item nine on the agenda is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the certified list of governing body and contact persons regarding the facility and financial information regarding the USDA annual reporting requirements, just part of our annual documentation for our loans that we have with the USDA.
So move.
Second.
Yes.
Item ten on the agenda, Water Resources requesting the Board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Rice Oil and Environmental LLC to perform oral oil water separator cleaning services at various locations within the department for the period of one year effective March twenty-fifth in an amount not to exceed thirty-five hundred dollars. So that covers our McFarland Plant Oil Water Separator here at Merritt Road for our facility, so.
Make that motion.
Second.
Yes.
Item eleven on the agenda is requesting the Board approve and execute the agreement between the Jogger County Board of Commissioners and HDR Engineering Incorporated for engineering services to Jogger County to perform engineering and construction services for the McFarland Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrade and Renovations Project, HDR. That's in the amount of one million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. HDR will be our representative onsite full-time during the construction of the plant. We will also be putting our, one of our guys on part-time to help coordinate, because we have to keep the plant running. So to coordinate with our team that's running the plant while the construction is going on. But HDRs, they did the original design. They have all the knowledge of it, and noting that this construction project's twenty-seven months. So if you take that amount and run it over twenty-seven months, it doesn't look to be that out of the ordinary.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Gina. That's been long time.
It's been a long time.
Yeah, good job.
So you have the plot plan and the blueprints in your office, then?
I have a copy of them. Most of them are digital, since we can see them everywhere, but I can show you.
Okay, hard copy if you want, when you come down there. Well, I'll just come and view it.
Perfect.
A ciber.
All right, sir.
Okay. I don't know.
Christie, do this. This is the Fifth Amendment to the Resolution for the Fifth Amendment, regarding approving use of county credit cards for the year twenty-twenty-five. This is to include veteran service commission for their adjournment visa and increasing the limit to be quarterly for the Department on Aging on their marks, marks investment account, and increasing it from two to twenty-five hundred dollars a quarter. So that is number twelve.
Twelve. So move. Second.
Yes.
The next item then is to approve the application for the use of county credit cards for veteran services to get the signatures on file, so if you're interested in this.
So move.
Second.
Hi.
Mr. Spudler.
Yes.
And then number fourteen is to approve the certification request to the County Auditor for that increase for aging for the for their marks. Limit.
Ready, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Mr. Spudler.
Yes.
Now that we're all kind of working our way through this process, I think again, we'll go more smoothly next year, because everybody understands the requirements and how to get what they need in a timely manner. Number fifteen, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the request for partial payment number eighteen for Infinity Construction Company Incorporated for the Jogger County Courthouse expansion, GMP number one and number two, expenses in the amount of eight hundred five thousand, eight hundred eighty-four dollars and sixty-four cents.
So move. Second.
Mr. Spudler.
Hi.
Mr. Spudler.
Yes.
Item sixteen, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board designate Commissioner James W. DeBorak as voting representative, alternate Megan Erickson, at the SECO Annual Membership Meeting on Friday, April fourth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Um, not to sound like a broken record, but under discussion for today, I have come back to you again with the Infinity Change Order number sixteen. We have representatives here for you to give explanations for the items that are on there. In the meantime, between the last time and this time, we did have an ADP board meeting, and it went really well. I was super grateful that Judge Pashke also attended. And we were able to get approval from the ADP Board for a great amount of the IT-related items for the courthouse construction. I don't know why it hadn't been done before now, but it has been done. And then I also sent this change order to Frank, asking him, just let me know what's on here that's going to need approval in the future. Because one of the things that did come out at the ADP Board meeting was that this change order can be approved as presented, pending ADP approval for those few things in there that will require that. And the things that he indicated to me that would require that would be the intercom system for the gate. As you may recall, the original secure access was going to be through the main door in the Sallyport, but then the sheriff requested that that secure access come out to the gate instead. So that requires coming underground with power, installation of an intercom system, and a key pad or a key swipe to get through that gate. So that's a big chunk of this, this change order. And again, though it's number sixteen, it's really the fifth from Infinity for this entire project so far. The intercom, there's a couple of data drops where, you know how when you're building something and then you see it and it's not what you thought it was going to be, and you change your mind? There was some changes for some cabinetry that, very specific, that had been requested. And then once they saw what it was going to be, they decided, no, I think we'd rather make this a place for printing. Well, to put a printer there, you have to have a dedicated circus circuit and a data drop and electricity, which were not part of the original plan. And so there's a couple of data drops for a couple of print stations, and those will require future ADP approval. And then again, the stuff associated with the gate. But it's, it is very clear that a lot of these things were, had at least some kind of sense that they were going to be approved a long time ago, last year. And many of these projects have already been begun, and things have been ordered. So I'm just respectfully requesting that we approve this one. I am riding herd very closely, and I'm sending you guys stuff every week as it comes forth. And I do want to let you know there is going to be a change order coming, but it's, they're giving money back.
That's good.
Yeah, there's going to be a couple of them, and it's going to be fairly significant. And we're just waiting for the second batch of stuff. They're going to put it all into a single change order. I know it's going to be at least twenty-seven hundred dollars, but there's a significant number of AV speakers that they changed their mind and they're not going to have. So there will be a change order coming for that. But the total for this change order is fifty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars, and it was for millwork, monitor brackets, the intercom systems for interview rooms, TV data drops, electrical power revisions, the exterior gain conduit, and wall revisions at the security desk. And that was a give back. They, there was supposed to be a window, and now there's not going to be a window because the rifle bag's going to be there. So that was a couple thousand that came back. So, and I did send you a spreadsheet that I got from Infinity showing everything that's gone in and out, because there've been quite a few actual givebacks on this. So at the end of the day, we're still only sitting at currently, I think, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars, thousand dollars on a twenty million dollar project. That seems not horrible. Anyway, respectfully requesting approval of change order number zero one six as presented to you guys over the last few weeks.
Now, everything was looked at and approved then with ADP on that.
They have not approved everything yet.
But they can.
It would be pending ADP approval for those elements that they would be needing to approve in the future. The timing on those approvals will be either they will have a special meeting in May, or there will be a meeting on June tenth.
All right, I'll make the motion then.
A second.
This is to approve the moving forward with Infinity's change order request, number zero one six.
Say that again.
That's the Infinity Change Order Request zero one six.
Correct.
That will become a change order that will become before you.
Yes.
The next.
The form will come once there's been approval given.
Mr. Spudler.
Yes.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. And I know they work too. The sheriff will too.
And thank you for bringing this up, you know, quicker, you know, sooner than later, starting in January, February, really compounding and zoning in on, on things and getting the information to us so we can look at it as early as possible.
I never want you to have bad surprises. Sometimes there are bad surprises, but I try not to.
Okay, well, thank you. Anything else, Chrissy?
I have nothing more under discussion.
Moving to public comment now.
Good morning, Ms. Morris. My name is Patty Phillip. I live at one four nine one four South State Avenue in Middlefield. And I'm here today, Mrs. Braykey, in the newspaper article of March thirteenth, requested public scrutiny. I'm here to, what I believe, inform some of the Board on things that the article made clear to me that were misunderstood. So today, I'm just going to reintroduce myself. I haven't been here for about five years. I've been working out of the county. But I do want to let you know that I'm going to be coming, especially to help Ms. Braykey understand some of the workings of government grants, airports. I've been a new court manager for, well, actually, almost twenty years. The one thing I did want to address today were two comments in the paper, one made by Mr. Spudler that said that the Commission has failed the airport. And I am here to tell you that is absolutely correct. The Board of Commissioners became co-sponsors of the airport back in nineteen ninety-three, and to date have not really made a substantial investment in the airport. We all would like to see airports become something that are self-sustaining. But in order to do so, the airport needs additional income streams. Building these tea hangers that they're asking to build would in fact give them an additional income stream, just to become more self-sustaining.
That means your time is up for public speaking. It's a two-minute thing. I'm sorry.
Great. So today, I'm just introducing, I will be back, because I would like Ms. Braykey to understand some of the comments that she made were inappropriate.
Thank you, Patty. And how many years were you manager at Jogger Airport?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
So you're absolutely right, and that was, you know, and I've been, been here for quite a number of years, and I've seen how in the past, you know, you would even bring things and that would continuously get, you know, shot down or, you know, diverted. And I, and I, I think that that's, you know, why we're, we've got the, the conditions, some of the conditions in the air, you know, at the airport, because we didn't make good concessions over the past, say, twenty or thirty years, and everybody around us did. And when you look at some of the airports that are out, you know, surrounding us, and the focus that they put in, they're, they are definitely experiencing the positive, you know, comebacks on what they, on their investments of what they did into the airports. And, you know, Lost Nation is a perfect example of that. You know, you look at the, you know, the value that that has brought to Lake County and the growth that that has, has, you know, enjoyed over the last few years. And I think that they've, and you included in that, because you've been a big part of that too. It's, you know, the writing is there, and the proof is in the pudding. So I appreciate, you know, you coming in and saying that, and not saying that because you agree with what I said, but it's just the truth. And I think that, you know, the, it's something that, I think people feel that it's always, the airport doesn't impact them, it's not important. Well, that's, you know, that's, that's not the way that we should look at things, and we should look at it in a, in a, you know, broader brush. that, that's, that's not the way that we should look at things and we should look at it in a, in a, you know, broader brush and just saying, what does it do for everybody? And, you know, one of the things I could tell you, Patty, that I've heard multiple times and you could, you could, you know, vouch for this is people say, well, there's no business traffic that comes into that airport, you know, and that's, that's false. Because you know it as well as I do that it does. And it still continues to serve a lot of those businesses in the area, you know? And I just think that we're really, um, putting our blinders on by not supporting the growth and the movement of our, of our airport and trying to improve conditions. So thanks again for coming out here and saying something.
You asked me to attest to that. May I do so?
Sure.
The fact of the matter is, um, economic development in an area of, um, for the airport, for example. The airport is the offering to the highway and the stacks. If you don't have an offering at your county, you are missing all kinds of opportunities.
Yeah.
And the of a grant that is on the table right now that you are definitely on the hook to lose very quickly is a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. If you look at the average of about twelve and a half, maybe fifteen thousand dollars that this commission has approved to put into the airport a year. That's nine years or so worth of your contributions. And that will fall off on the twenty-eighth of April. And I, I know Ms. Brady, you made a, a, a comment that the airport could use the money for something else. That's not the case here because you're not understanding the process. The process to be able to use that grant money first, it was part of the infrastructure, bipartisan infrastructure law. By law, that money has been assigned to this airport. If they try to use it for something other than what has been approved by FAA back in September of last year, they have to go through an entire process and they don't have time to do it. First, they have to go out to get a consultant. It's a process that is required by FAA. That takes at least three weeks. Then they have to go, um, make a contract that's going to take at least another week. Then they have to go out, uh, put in a pre-application with FAA. FAA doesn't get anything quickly. And then they have to go to bid and then they have to put in a final application. All that has to be done by April twenty-eighth. That's five weeks away. You can't cram that into five weeks. It's urgent.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comment?
This weekend is Vietnam Veterans Recognition, well, uh, I, I'm here. That's probably the best way to put it. Uh, this is Vietnam Veterans Recognition Day this weekend. And I would hope that most of the people here would also recognition, excuse me, recognize the Vietnam veterans that especially those that lost their lives over there. We've lost sixty thousand people that are on the wall in Washington. And we have a lot to be thankful for. One last point, next week we'll get the airport situation squared away, won't we?
Yes, I'm hopeful.
We will get the airport situation squared away next week. If everybody comes and talks about it. Comparing our airport portage and attributes, we have a wonderful airport. A good group of people and a very viable program. It has to stay that way. Or as the lady puts out, our inroads to the internet and everything are going to be lost. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, uh, Ohio Phil Representative, um, go ahead.
Yeah, very briefly, uh, just wanted to introduce a program. My name is the Fundren. I, I work for a nonprofit called the Ohio Land and Liberty Coalition. Our mission is to build conservative support for renewable energy across the state. Uh, that's not why I'm here today. Today I'm here to pick your brain, uh, hopefully come back at a later date with a little bit more time. We're doing an eighty-eight county tour, which by the end of the year will have met with every single board of county commissioners in the state. We are at twenty-three right now, uh, got a list of standardized eight questions just to ask about what y'all's experiences have been here in the county. Um, so I just wanted to introduce myself briefly this morning and hopefully maybe we can schedule a five to ten minutes, uh, at a different time.
Okay, thanks for coming in. Seeing no hands raised. Oh.
I have a question, the, the form, you, Ms. Hand. Um, you mentioned that the airport hasn't gotten substantial funding. So can you kind of explain that? And what would have been substantial funding?
Well, I have not been, um, manager of the airport for more than five years, so I can only speak to the fifteen years that I was there. Uh, the average, um, that is being contributed was done so by an agreement between the commissioners and the airport to cover grants, the grant matches. FAA provides grants to, uh, all airports. Um, Jogga has an entitlement every year of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the commissioners have graciously agreed in the agreement that was put in place when I was there to match those grants up to about twenty-five thousand dollars. In most cases, uh, they've taken about a hundred and twelve, nearly a hundred and fifteen thousand, oh, average over the years. And, um, those did match those grants as requested. And if you take a look at the number of residents in the county of Jogga and you provide that by the amount of money that has been re-aggregated, that's been contributed to the airport. It's about twenty-seven cents a resident. Um, this is a little sarcastic, but if it were me and somebody complained about what's going on at the airport. Um, I flip them a quarter and then tell them how much I appreciate their two cents worth of comments. Because the fact of the matter is, this airport needs to be supported by the organization that agreed to support it back in nineteen ninety-three.
Any other public comment? Hearing none. I move your turn. Second.